Well, Margaret too.
Yeah, Margaret is zooming in also.
How about let's see.
Does it exist?
David Ramsey, where's he?
Yeah, David Ramsey.
Did he know that?
And Doug. Is this saying me again?
Hello? I can't hear showing up as Phyllis Fox on my phone.
Who is it?
You have a new identity. Doug's trying to get in.
Okay.
Yeah, it's if you're you're on my phone is Phyllis Fox. That's that's Corey, he's gonna love that.
Oh, that's Doug, right?
Oh, it's Doug. Oh, dear. So. How many? Well, what about if you just call the work phone, we'll put you on speakerphone. Okay, seven four three seven one six two.
The plat that I was looking at.
Who does that?
Doug. It's Phyllis.
Hey, Corey, can you hear us?
Yes.
Not really, it's.
Okay.
I think I think. It's like if we could image the hood proved, that'd be great. I was like, oh, we can. So. Do you let Corey in?
Hi, Corey.
Doug.
Oh, he's muted.
Okay. I'm going to jump straight. Corey, unmute. Okay. Okay.
All right, so the participants are supposed to be on mute or?
No.
They're not.
I don't know.
Well, everyone who joins as a guest is supposed to be muted at this point.
Okay.
The rest of us are not supposed to be muted.
Okay, you guys are not muted, all of the people zooming in are muted.
Exactly.
So who's who's zooming in?
Doug Hopson, your chairman.
Um, so I don't see Doug.
Doug is on the phone right here.
Your chairman, your chairman's in there, so he's not testing.
And who is the chairman?
Todd. Todd. He's got our Todd Hopson, he's got to be that neat.
All right, so you can be unmuted, Todd.
So really, the only person who should be muted is Corey unmuted. That's an interesting thought, isn't it?
No, I don't want Corey to be muted.
Okay, Todd, can you test that and?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you. It's just not very loud, I mean.
We're gonna get, I'm gonna get trouble in here.
So we are, we are recording right now. I'm I'm having trouble getting it posted to the live link. Uh, so I guess we'll just get that posted, just so you're aware.
I'll stay on it. Okay. Thank you.
I'm having trouble, I don't, I can't log in through Ashley's link to post live, so I'm recording it, but it's not gonna be a live showing. Right now. Okay.
Did you hear me clearly?
Uh, no, it's. We should be able to.
Okay, yeah, you need to test it.
Okay. We should be recording and and hopefully we can post it later. Okay, so we're good, it's on, it can, it volumes up, Todd's going, so you guys go.
Can he hear you say that?
Are we ready?
Yes, yeah.
Can you turn that a little louder?
All right.
Turn it all the way up.
It is all the way up, I'm sorry.
Ready, Todd?
Yeah, we're ready, you wanna go start to start, so we'll call this meeting to order. If I'd have known you all were there, I'd have I'd have come too. We'll uh, we'll start with the implication, uh, Charlene, can you handle that?
I can do it.
All right.
Let's see. Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, we are so thankful that we live in a country where freedom, freedom to be as we are meaning is possible. Be with this gathering, help us to be wise in our decisions, help us to represent our town well, and help us to bring new glory in all our, all our content. In your son's name we pray.
Yeah. All right, attention, salute, pledge.
One nation, two divided by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, uh, Debbie, would you call the roll, please?
Charlene Thomas, present. David Ramsey. Phyllis Fox. Here. Doug Hopson.
Present.
Johnny Lynch.
Here.
David Cannon.
Here.
Todd Hopson.
Here. All right, everybody has a copy of the last month's meeting minutes. Any questions or comments?
I don't have that exception.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Mister, Mister Chairman, for the record, is it all right if the participants respond, I can see and I can hear on the next round, cause he can do it on first.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Charlene Thomas.
Yes, and I can see and I can hear.
Phyllis Fox, I can see and I can hear, yes. Doug Hopson.
I can hear, but.
Johnny Lynch.
Yes, I can see and I can hear.
David Cannon.
I can see and I can hear, yes.
Todd Hopson.
Yes, and I can see and I can hear. All right. First item under old business is consideration of application for certi- certificate of compliance from new owner of Maple Grove Liquor Store.
I question, do we have to, um, I mean, didn't we do this last month? Or do we have to?
Yes, I thought we voted last month.
Yeah. I mean, we voted on her.
Yeah, she was here last month, but.
So.
It's on the, it's on the, and so.
Yeah, the the way we did it before Elizabeth left, she just wanted to make sure she put it on there since it was conducted and she wanted all of her, you know, everything to be. So like we all, well, she taught me to always put like old business, so just move it up and that way if there's any more lingering questions, but. Since it was already passed, she just wanted to make sure she covered all of her faces before we leave, so didn't leave any like stone unturned. So. As far as me knowing really anything about it, I don't, I actually only believe it on there, so. Okay, well, I believe this is already passed. Yes.
Next.
Nothing under new business, nothing under other business. Do we have anybody there that would like to address the role?
I do.
Okay.
I'm on. Corey, Corey.
If I'm on, yes, uh, am I, am I on?
We can, we can hear you.
Good.
Smack King. So we can just see you really well.
Debbie, I can't hear what's going on.
Keep it important on for citizens comment.
Okay.
Charlene, I can't hear you, but just tell me, raise your hand when I'm supposed, when I'm on.
He's still carrying.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you all for for letting me speak to you, especially under these unusual conditions and so on, and I think probably those of you in the town hall room there have a handout that I brought down a little while ago, do you? In front of you?
Yes.
So you can kind of follow along a little bit with uh, with what I'm talking about here, but um. It's basically a packet that has a variety of different kinds of documents in it. So several months ago, a- and I think that basically I want to alert you to something that that I think many of the commissioners may not be aware of. That's important to the town. So several months ago, Summers Taylor Materials Company bought the Caps Hyder Asphalt Plant, uh, kind of next to the Unicorn Quarry. And it's a big, well-funded and well-connected company that operates statewide and I think even nationwide. And they did this as seems to be apparent because I twenty-six will soon be repaid. From uh. Apparently from the Washington County line all the way up to Sam's Gap or close to it, but there's a very long stretch of I twenty-six will be repaid. So if you look at the uh, the first page of the handout, those of you had it. It shows the status of two permits that are currently in place at the Tennessee Division of Air Pollution Control in Nashville. And you notice the first one is active. And that's active because it's it's a it's a permit to bring a portable asphalt plant from Blountville to the Unicorn site. It's a, it's a plant that Summers Taylor already owns, and they move it around from job to job. And it's it's a, it's a good-sized plant. And so that permit was approved by the Tennessee office that you see there, which is an air can, air pollution control office. It was approved uh, in March, and in fact, the notice for public comment, which is an requirement that such a notice be placed in a local newspaper. Actually, it's in Kingsport. Can you hear me okay?
Word of like, cool saying, but when he used to, I'd like to make a comment if they can hear me or anything.
Okay, well, we can hear you. Now, we're having, or can you speak up a little louder, or can you turn your speaker up?
Uh, yeah, so I, yeah, really, let me. I'm on my webcam speaker. I'll just try to talk louder. Can everybody hear me okay? Let me, let me look at my settings and make sure.
It does really matter, because he's on the speaker.
Just shout.
Yeah, I'm on my webcam speaker, it should be loud, but I'll try, I'll try to shout.
Okay. Do you want me to move it closer, you think?
I'm I'm a foot and a half from my speaker.
No, we're talking more to us. I'm gonna move you closer.
Okay.
Yeah. Much better.
How about no?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first page basically is the cover page of the state's website, and it shows these two permits. You'll notice that one is active, and as I was saying, uh, in part, it's active because there was no public comment made on it. And the reason for that is because it was published in the Kingsport Times News Newspaper rather than a local newspaper, there's a thirty-day public comment period. And uh, apparently nobody saw that. That permit is, I said, I don't know how many people heard me, but it's in a, in essence, it's to bring a portable asphalt plant that already exists in Blountville, that this company Summers Taylor owns, to bring it here to the Unicorn site next to the uh, the uh, the quarry. And uh, the second permit, which is noted as pending, is pending because it is now in the period of public comment. And that notice was actually first published in the Kingsport paper as well, but then later was published on May twentieth in the Irwin Record, where a local citizen did see it, and uh. So it came to everyone's attention at that point. And what that plant, what that the permit is an application to do, it's a separate application permit, uh, for permit from uh, from this company to put an existing, to replace the existing single drum batch mixer that the Caps Plant had in place, to replace that with a double drum mixer, which will effectively double the capacity of that particular unit. But remember, in addition, they want to put another, a second separate plant on the same site. It would be a uh, a portable plant, roughly the equivalent capacity of the one that's there now, roughly in that, in that ballpark. And uh. I'm not sure, so uh, that notice was placed in the, in the Irwin Record on May twentieth, and it allows thirty days for public comment, so that period will expire on uh, June nineteenth. So a growing number of neighbors in the area, uh, in the vicinity of the plant are writing letters to the state office asking for a public hearing to be held. And if you follow this link further from the site, you'll see the letters that they posted so far that have been received. And uh. A number of the people who are concerned live in the Spring Valley subdivision, which is less than a half mile from the existing plant. So kind of to to summarize that, the former Caps Plant capacity will be at least doubled and maybe tripled in terms of gaseous emissions from it, and the noise it produces, and the truck traffic, and in fact, probably it'll be even more than that. Because interstate paving is done at night, and the current, the the former plant operated only normal, under, during normal business hours. You would think that this plant will be operating at night to serve the need for asphalt, uh, for the repaving that's going on at night. And if that's the case, then it'll be operating pretty much twenty-four seven, so you can double the tripling that's already occurring basis, based on the capacity. There's another point, there are a number of points here that that are kind of important for you all to know. One is that there will be no emissions control on any of this equipment, because the, the capacity of the larger plant, that's the, that's the doubled plant, actually exceeds the amount it requires emissions control equipment to be put in place on the stack or whatever the various parts of the uh, of the plant are. But the uh, application specifies an amount of capacity that's well below the actual capacity of the plant. It comes in under the amount that requires emissions control equipment to be put on, so um. So what what it amounts to is that that will involve self-reporting rather than the automated monitoring of emissions coming out. Uh, and so you can, you know, imagine that's a lot different from automated, uh, computer-controlled monitoring, captures data, and probably sends it, I would think, to Nashville or whoever needs to see it. But anyway, uh, it's gonna be involving self-reporting instead. So the Caps Plant was installed, we believe, in nineteen ninety-three, probably before the town was even in place, but certainly before nineteen ninety-five. If you flip further back, and in this package, you'll pass the blown-up copies of the notices that were in the paper for these two different permits.
Draw attention to the air pollution down there.
And uh, on one of them, let's see, the uh, the public notice, um, that uh. There are two, two ones, the the public, the published notice that says in the top, published five twenty, you'll see down at the bottom there, it says, regulated air contaminants emitted by this source would increase, and again, that's the double-sized mixer. That's obviously what it is, but if you follow those uh, notice pages, you'll see an ordinance of the town of Unicorn that was passed in nineteen ninety-five. It has apparently never been rescinded, it's still in force, and it'll, it uh, prohibits um, new asphalt plants being put in place in the town of Unicorn. So I talked with the town attorney, and um. The existing plant is uh, is cited on a two-acre parcel. And apparently, the law allows any amount of expansion to be put onto that two-acre parcel, because it's grandfathered in since the original plant, which was much smaller, was put in place before the ordinance was was passed. But that only applies to a two-acre parcel. And those of you who have the packet, if you go to the next page, it's a map, you'll see outlined in in blue, uh, a kind of a rectangle area, that's the two big, two-acre parcels that the Caps Plant sits on now. But Summers Taylor bought, in addition, land that the Hyder family owned, the Caps, so company, whatever they were as a company. They owned additionally at least three other parcels and maybe four that are outlined in yellow, going outward toward the quarry and to the north from there. And they uh, for Marbleton Road, basically, so those totaled a little over fifteen acres. So it's thirteen plus more acres beyond the two acres that the the plant currently sits on. And uh. So.
No.
Operations on that land beyond the blue area are not grandfathered in, okay? They're not covered by uh, that grandfathering of the original two-acre part. So again, the town owns all uh, the town zones all fifteen-plus acres as agricultural load density. The county zones the two-acre parcel as commercial. And they zone the additional thirteen-plus acres as residential. So in any case, none of this is owned. Industrial at all. It's owned for light, light use, either agricultural or residential. But again, it's grandfathered in on the two-acre parcel. So to make some points here, Summers Taylor didn't contact the town about this plan, and it's a big change from what's there now. And either by accident or on purpose, the first notice was placed in that town paper. And. What happens if you research these kinds of operations is they tend to slip under the radar into small towns. And in this region, in western North Carolina, for example, there are stories you can read online about how they've done that, and they come in kind of real low and uh, uh, with low visibility and work with the state, because they're very well, they're very well organized, they're very professional, and their applications are all complete. First, they go for an air, uh, an air quality uh, permit, that's what the stage they're at now, and then a construction permit later. And uh, so I'm guessing that once the construction starts on any project like that, it's gonna be very hard to reverse. The key is to get it early before construction starts. So here's the thing, there's, if you go to the next page beyond the maps. There's a uh, a site layout plan that's from two thousand and six, and it covered the existing Caps uh, facility. Did y'all see that? It's a, it's a diagram. Sorry, Todd, you're not seeing that, but uh, that's the existing single, uh, single mix plant. And uh, you can see that it fills up the area pretty well, and that was two thousand and six. One would imagine it might be filled up even more now with other kinds of storage areas and so on, but I don't know that, so I haven't been there. But you can imagine that the proposal to double the size of the existing single match plant and add another plant entirely on top of that would uh, would uh, really crowd that site, and it's, it's in addition to that, it's storage silos, crushers, there's office space and truck loading and parking. Meanwhile, the operation of repaving a uh, a big highway involves scraping off the top five inches of asphalt and bringing that back as wrap, uh, reclaimed asphalt paving, and either crushing it on-site or bringing it back to the plant where it would be recycled and crushed there. And so that's a whole other operation, that stuff has to be stored, and there's a lot of it that comes back in trucks, it goes out as asphalt, comes back as, as crushed up wrap. And uh, so that has to be stored, and um. The thing is, in in making asphalt, when you're, when you're recycling this uh, wrap, it has oil on it, and it has rubber that's been mixed into it to make the road last longer. And so the smell of all that, everybody smelled a small asphalt mixer probably as your driveway was being redone, you know how that smells. But you can imagine burning rubber and then diesel fuel plants on top of that, and the scale and size of this uh, would be uh, much, much greater than what's ever been there before. And uh, another point is that there's probably not going to be local sales tax paid on this. Our understanding is that, uh, and I talked with attorney Lois Schultz about this. It's possible that even anything sold wholesale doesn't generate state sales tax, but pretty much for certain things that are sold to the state on a state contract, don't generate local sales tax. There's kind of some uncertainty about what kind of trucks they're transported in and so on, but in general. It's it's, it's easy to assume that there would be limited, if any, uh, local sales tax generated by it, so it's kind of a one-way street, right? You're receiving all this, but you don't get anything in return.
No profit.
So I kind of want to begin to wrap up here by saying, I mean, if you look at the next map, uh, which has a round red circle on it. You guys are in charge of planning to protect the citizens of the town, this is going to hurt the quality of life here and health and property values quite a bit. The closer you are to the plant, the more it'll affect you, but it'll affect everybody eventually. This valley is the valley beautiful, and it's called Unica because Cherokee used to call it Unica, which meant foggy or fog, uh, fog, hidden, and uh. You know, we see it from where we live, it's a, the land, it's a narrow valley, if you turn to the next map, you can see the valley itself is Buffalo Mountain on one side and Little Mountain on the other, it kind of comes to a narrow point. And if the air is not moving, the air isn't going anywhere, it's gonna, it's gonna settle down like fog in here, and uh. It'll eventually affect the whole town, it goes uphill into the town, so. What we'd like to see from you, and it's a group of citizens, what we'd like to see from, from the planning commission is you guys to ask them for a site use plan before they start. And to also engage however it's appropriate for your group to do, to enforce the ordinance that exists now against the expansion of any asphalt plant beyond the boundaries of that two-acre site where it's granted public in. And then to look at road use restrictions, because these operations of these huge trucks are gonna tear up town roads one way or another, no matter what the, no matter what the uh, directions they take, and maybe other mitigation measures. So, you know, the towers, there are things like that, that if you look into it, you're gonna find a lot of things that other, other small towns have been successful in imposing on them at times, if they catch it early enough. And it's possible to do, because there are laws in place, and that's your, your right to impose those restrictions and ordinances. But if you wait till, till the thing is well underway and a lot of money spent and constructions there, it's much, much harder to reverse. And it also has to be done fast, because the public comment period will end on the nineteenth, and uh, I don't know how far beyond that it takes them to get the construction permit, but it'll be pretty soon, I imagine they will move things as quickly as can be moved. So thank you for your time, and I, I've left additional copies down at the channels for, you know, Todd and Doug, if you want to come by and pick those up, and I have other copies here. You run out of them, I could certainly bring up the copies of the package down with town, but I think it's better to hear it described as you're looking at it than to just look at it yourselves. Is, are there any questions? I hope I've made that sort of clear and made the main points, I hope.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to ask him if they've talked any outside legal. Uh, it's gonna be a long, broad-out battle if we ever try to take on, but I believe, I, it's all factual, both ways, but I want to know if they've talked, they've probably taken, they, they would need to get outside legal counsel to help them represent or see what they're going at, because I don't think we could, we could afford right now to do the big, what it takes to, and it would be, it might take us years to draw out something on that right now.
Doug, if you're asking me, have, have we, being this small group of citizens, talked to anybody, you know, this started, we found out about this ten days ago. We only know a little bit more than you now know. In fact, we don't know any more than you now know, really. And uh, you know, no, we're not gonna be talking to legal counsel to fight a big corporation, but we're kind of hoping that the town will be our defense, because that's the only line of defense we have.
Where?
I really can't understand you, but I think still, I think they need to get the outside legal, legal representation to, to take it all the way, they want to, because we've been through this for years and years, and I don't know what we have to, what we have to stand on right now, I really don't.
Doug, you haven't been through this for years and years with this particular set of permit applications and regarding this particular two-acre site, but I'm gonna let you all talk among yourselves, because I really don't think I have a role in discussing what the town can and can't do, I don't know the answer to that, but I have said, we're not planning to engage legal counsel. Where would we stop, you know, ten residents, twenty, a hundred, a thousand? It's not our job to do, really.
Doug, I disagree with you, um, if this last picture is showing, well, you don't have the picture, but it's, this is showing
No.
the old asphalt leaving this kind of crap in the air. And you've got a hundred families living there with children, you know, you don't want them breathing that. And it is the town's responsibility to ask for a public meeting, and then.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
No, wait, wait, wait. Then.
Okay.
it is the responsibility of the citizens to come together and, and, you know, I get so angry, and and Corey has heard this over and over about us losing our golf course, and I blame that on the citizens not granting and raving and going to Johnson City and making a big deal out of it. But then they want to blame the town. Well, the town needs to ask for a public meeting and say that we, they have to come in front of zoning. And, and the town, one, once we get that public meeting, then the citizens that this is affecting have to open their mouths and stamp their feet and say, we're not gonna take it. And, you know, it doesn't really involve an attorney, it involves citizen action. And that's what I, I would make a motion that we do that. You know, say we have, we've got, you know, I went on this website, and I know there's at least fifteen letters. I, you know, and they're showing seven. And not only that, this thing from the Irwin Record, there's, they showed the wrong page. You know, the guys care, that's how much caring they put into it, and then they put an ad in the Kingsport Times News, they bring in that stupid dirty thing, you know, and this, this. James P. Johnston, P E, I don't know what P E stands for, but he's the deputy director that permitted it, and he's just. Okay, well, you know, how dare he do that when nobody has been notified in the town? You know, no, nobody in Unicorn County was notified. And so we.
And the state, the state didn't bother any yet, any, anybody from the state, I mean, as far as, you know?
We've contacted them.
They've had fifteen letters, and they don't have all of them out. There, there's fifteen letters, okay, and if you say each family has three people, let's say, that's, that's only what? Forty-five people that.
Forty-five, yeah.
It's affecting, and that's enough. You know, that's enough for us to have a meeting and demand it, demand a called meeting. Public meeting.
To get, to get, to get the facts, you get the information.
That's right.
I see what you're saying there, I understand that, but. To get, to get, to get the facts, you get the, I see what you're saying there, I understand that, but-
Yes, we fought this, but, you know, they are allowed to grandfather their footprint. They're not taking their footprint, they're putting a giant thing on, you know? So, I mean, we can't stop them for maybe improving what they have here, but if you yell loud enough and everything, they can't expand like that, and they can't do that to all these families. That's not right. I go out in the woods and I sit there and I think, my God, this is the most beautiful, cleanest air I've ever seen in my life. And I was raised in a really nice area. You know, you can't compete with this air. And then you're gonna let some, I, I just, I think it's the town's responsibility to make sure that there is a called meeting and we're all, we all speak.
And if they're going to improve whatever they do, it's going to be a big improvement to what we've got or had, you know?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And the, uh, the person in charge of this case said if enough, basically if enough people contacted them, they would be, they would work toward a public hearing, but there had to be considerable public interest. Just so you know.
And the, and the town has to show that it has considerable public interest.
Not true.
Should we make a motion that we, we ask for a public meeting? The town asks for a public meeting on this?
The mayor has already signed a letter for that purpose to ask for considerable public interest.
Are you having on that, John?
Because there's, because there's so many citizens who can't address it. And, and, uh, I indicated to Mr. Lewis that we would email him a copy of that, I hadn't given that email address to David yet, so a copy of that would be coming out of court. Somebody must get a copy of it.
You know, that's, I think that's really important. But I do think it's important also for the fact that this guy approved it in Kingsport. Isn't it a law that they, it has to be in a paper that people get in the area? I mean, you can't put this on the back page of Kingsport Times.
That's the one involving the bluntful, um, um, uh, equipment acquisition into the Sullivan County paper. And generally, the law requires a newspaper, a, a, a general circulation in the locality that's affected.
So they're still, they haven't done what they haven't done, or they're supposed to do.
Well, I, you know, I haven't looked at what regulations they're doing that under. But, uh, the only connection I could see with Kingsport Times, Sullivan County newspaper, was the transfer of a client from a Sullivan County location. You know, I can understand that on the first one, and that one's been approved, but I don't know why they would have done that. It may be an error, they may need to re-noticing in a newspaper or a general circulation. I don't know if anybody's asked to say about that or not, but, um, I'm not sure that, that, uh, doing the publication in Sullivan County is affected at least to the second, yeah, because that's not a newspaper of general circulation in Sullivan County. That's a good question to ask them.
Okay, so we do have a letter asking for a public.
Mine was signed in two minutes, yeah.
We did that.
Thank you, John.
I thought we already ended, yeah.
We do. Okay.
Court, is that okay, Court? He's on mute.
Well, it's enough for me to say okay, but I certainly do, uh, appreciate and like the idea that, uh, I know that the mayor and the, and the Lois, the attorney, had said before that the town would send in a letter, so that's great. That will, that will be worth more weight than all of the citizens probably be doing. But we're certainly continuing to expand the number of citizens who are right away.
Nobody knows. I would like to-
We need to make sure when, when, when there is a town here, there needs to be, uh, if I can suggest this, there needs to be in the public, in the course of things, there would be, but a way to really publicize it so that many of the people, everybody in the town is aware of it. Because so far, this has flown under the radar, and it needs to come way above the radar.
Yeah, the only kind that would come close would be a publisher than the, uh, Johnston City.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, that, that's a no-brainer, publish it in Kingsport. Who cares what goes on in Kingsport? We didn't know about it here.
It already smells bad.
The Johnson paper is a paper of general circulation. They did put it in Irwin Record, a weekly paper, but the folks I have talked to said that they didn't see it because they get the chances. So they should have done both. They're on those, on those notices where it's, uh, these papers, you know, it's like, gosh, you're not required to do both if there's two in the town. But unfortunately, they chose to.
Yes, but you have a friend who was looking at that page.
Yeah, I've got good friends who look at those pages. I look at them too now because, well, I move that the planning commission support the town in calling for a public meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that the planning commission will support, uh, calling a, a, a meeting, uh, with Summers and Taylor. Any other comments or questions?
No, with, with-
With the air pollution.
Fates.
Yeah.
I'll say we need to meet with.
Yeah, because of the air pollution.
Tennessee Division of Air Pollution Control.
Okay.
So if I can ask a question, this would be the town initiating the meeting and inviting those participants rather than waiting for the state to initiate the meeting?
I can, I can hear you.
Is that the idea?
Repeat that again.
Would this be the town initiating a meeting and inviting those participants as opposed to the state going through their process to initiate a town meeting, which we don't know what happened? But this would be the town initiating it, is the idea?
It could be both, I think.
It could be both, I'd be great if they were both, the more the better.
I think more individuals can, can request it.
I'm going, I'm gonna send a note to this James P. Johnston and say, hey, you put this in the Kingsport Times News. Not a local paper. I don't know what the law is on that, but it sure seems like they're not allowed to do that.
And then can we get this on, uh, the agenda for mayor and alderman next week?
Can we put on the VMA agenda?
Yes. Johnny says yes.
Okay.
Mayor's issues.
All right, we, we still have the motion, uh, that we need to, to vote on.
Would you repeat what the motion is?
The motion is that, uh, the planning commission will support, um, uh, calling a meeting with, uh, a, a, a public meeting with the, the state. You had it there, Charlie.
Tennessee Division of Air Pollution Control.
Tennessee Department of Air Pollution Control.
Tennessee Division of Air-
Okay.
And I second that.
And, okay, we've got a motion in a second, all right. Debbie?
Charlie Thomas, yes. Ellis Fox, yes. David Popson.
Yes.
Johnny Lynch.
Yes.
Andy Manon.
Yes.
Carl Mox.
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
If I were to say, I'm, while I'm, while I'm unmuted for the moment, I just want to thank you all for, uh, for, for listening to us and for taking your concern in this series, and I appreciate that. This is good.
Thanks, Court.
Is, is there, is there one other thing that we should say that they must meet zoning requirements? Because, you know, a lot of these people come in and they do not know we have zoned.
That's, that's understood, I would think.
We can introduce them to that fact when they show up. It's not necessary to play all your cards the first time, you know?
But what if they know they refuse to?
Then we'll take that, we, we will take action on that. Now, let's give them, give them an opportunity to refuse to meet. And if they refuse to meet, then we will decide what an appropriate second step would be.
Would we have time to do that?
We got, we got time to do anything.
We've got ten days.
Okay.
Amen.
The, uh, Department of Air Control, yeah, the, the environmental, uh, side of it. And, and we can make this as uncomfortable for Summers and the, they can look like real villains for going forward. And, you know, we can villainize the Department of Pollution Control along the way. They can play nice, or they can play hard, I don't care which one we choose. But it, it's not necessary to, to tell them everything that we are thinking at this point, other than show up. We want to have a meeting.
But should we be, should we be fair to them upfront? I mean, give them a chance to say what they're going to do, I mean, not, not going to, they're trying to hang in my front and see what they're doing and what their plans are and all that without crucially, I mean, I mean, don't, we don't want that now until we see what's going on.
Let me just, I'm gonna say, and that the, the, uh, the applications are all online, there's documents on this, uh, website that's underneath the front page of this. Um, I've downloaded copies of them, and you can too, or I'd be glad to, to send them, uh, to, to, uh, whoever you'd like me to send them to on the planning commission or to the mayor or whoever. But, uh, the, the documents are all there, but certainly, you know, asking them in advance, well, I don't have a role in, in having an opinion here, but that was a good point, to ask them in advance what their plans are.
Todd?
Yes, ma'am.
I did not realize that David Ramsey had joined the meeting.
Yeah, he slipped in late.
Okay. Does he, does he want to vote on that?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies for being late. I started at about, uh, five or six minutes before the meeting, uh, trying to get connected, and I'm having trouble with my internet here. So for nearly thirty minutes, I struggled and finally got connected, but I'm not familiar with the issue that you're discussing. So I think it might be better for me to withhold my vote on that, uh, until I can find, find out more about it. Because I, I don't, I don't have a clue what you're really talking about, I don't think, think that would be fair.
Okay. Well, okay, one suggestion, and, and, you know, you and I always disagree, but the thing, the thing is that I think what we went through with the lady, the, the guy who bought the house here, didn't know it was zoned. Then we went through with the lady, the realtor in downtown, didn't know we had zoning. You know, I think that it needs, they need to know that this area is zoned. We have things we do and things we don't allow. You know, and they just need to know that, that they are going to, even if, no matter what happens, they have to come on the zoning. And they need to know that now.
Tell them that there are zoning regulations-
Yes.
and ordinances in place to protect the town.
Okay, that's right.
That's a good way to put it.
That's very good.
And they're designed for a purpose. I mean, they were very carefully thought out.
And so since we have them, you get to play by them.
Yes, yeah, exactly, as long as they know that they have zoning.
Next.
Yes, next. There, we, we don't have anything else on the agenda. We've got a new, new person, Allison, welcome.
Hi, thank you. She's a neighbor, she's right down the street from most of us. Yeah.
Well, maybe she'll be around for a while.
Yes, we hope so.
We have had a long run of planners.
Well, hopefully, I'll do y'all a good job, I promise. This is my home, so I, I take great pride in being here and wanna, wanna do everybody a really good job. One, because I, you know, I live here, but I love East Tennessee as well, and so this is home to me and so many others, and I just, if it's legal, I'm your girl. If it's always tied on the side of what's legal, what's, what's the right thing to do, and, um, there'll be no BS coming from me, so.
Well, good, well.
Probably should have worded that better, but first thing that came to my, to my mind, so.
All right, anybody else have anything? Debbie, you got anything for us?
No.
Lois?
No, we're good.
Both in here. Second.
All right, all, all in favor?
Yeah.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Todd. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Now, is there, is there?